Good evening. Welcome to Calumet Club's Division 132 Board of Education School Board Meeting. John will call.
Yes, Brown, absent, Dixon, Golar, absent, Kimbrough, Love, present, Story, Harris.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suggested motion, be hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the agenda for March 2024 recession as presented. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Story, second. Second by Ms. Kimbrough. Question? Roll call, John.
Brown, absent, Dixon, Golar, absent, Kimbrough, Love, yes, Story, Harris.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Superintendent, your point?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board community. Tonight we have just a few updates for the board. We will start with the Academic Services Department with Ms. Bates to talk about our Saturday school program as well as our April PD month.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so first I just want to say thank you so much to our community for the support. We started off with eighty-nine students who had registered for Saturday school. We ended up having on average sixty-six students every Saturday for seven weeks. Thanks to our awesome staff for committing their time as we were able to cover both reading and math, using our scores, using our pre and post tests, and also using the resources that we have. And also, just want to say a shout out to our pick our students, those who attended regularly. We're rewarding them with a special trip. We're still working on details of that. And that will be forthcoming, but all of our students received certificates of appreciation. Our teachers worked with our kids doing small group instruction, and it just was a really great learning experience. But I will say, the best part that our students mentioned was having game time in open gyms. So that was great, too. So I'll touch bases very quickly on our intensive professional development that will take place next month. We have twelve incredible after-school PDs that are going to be offered, from instructional practices to self-care. And some of our very own staff, along with a couple other people, will be helping us put this wonderful opportunity of learning in place for the entire month of April. And again, this is open to our teachers as well as our peer professionals to help us all to be, to be more prepared as we move forward to the next new year.
Any question for Ms. Bates?
I think the PDs are gray. I'm glad the kids enjoyed the open gym. No, but as was the academic, with the PDs, Dr. Alexander, is this, um, did you budget that in, or do we have some type of grant as well to carry that?
It's budgeted from our community partnership grant. And I think it's, some of it's coming from another grant, but it's all grant funded.
It's all grant?
You have a question?
Not a question, but a comment. I'm just happy to see that teachers are running from other teachers in the building because everybody has something to offer and growth of, you know, knowledge that they can pass to their colleagues. And I think that's just a process.
As a matter of fact, we've been really helping along inviting some of our teachers to be a part of our professional development week. So it's been really great. So I, I, I too agree with you one hundred percent.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Next, we will have Mr. Cordley, who will give us an update on our Calumet Gym Instruction Project.
Good evening, board. My presentation tonight will be very brief, two minutes. As you can see, the gym, I mean, the addition actually looks like an addition now. It went from, you know, just a dirt field to what we have now, all our free cast panels. So pretty much the whole exterior of the building is installed. You know, what you see now is what it's gonna look like as far as exterior, as far as the building is concerned. We are completely under roof now, so the roof in both sections of the building is installed totally. Also, all the underground plumbing and electric is also installed. So, and also, one of the, one good thing is our neighbors have been very cooperative. We've had really no complaints really at all. So we've been trying to keep our neighbors abreast of things. If we have to pull something or we have a big delivery coming, we try to keep them informed of those things. And also, actually, starting last Thursday, we started pouring concrete on the interior of the building. So we've laid our multipurpose room. We poured the stage that's actually gonna be in there. It's gonna be used for many different events, but that's been poured. And starting tomorrow, we'll be starting to pour the connection between the current building and the new building. That will get poured tomorrow. The loading dock will get poured, and also the mechanical room as well. So we're moving, all of this seventy degrees in February really blessed us. So it helped us move along the project along very far, much further than where we thought we'd be at this point. So we're looking forward, we're pretty much tracking on schedule with, you know, having the building open by the start of school, you know. If we stay on this track, we should be ready to go by August at the opening of the school. That's really it for me. Oh, yeah, sure. So what you see here is, just visualize it. This is the actual connection between the new building and the old building. So this will be the connections between the two buildings. Of course, it won't look like that it'll be all lit up. It'll be all lit up, and we're actually adding one window here at this end, and it'll be another window there. So provide, provide a little bit more natural lighting hallway. This is actually, what you're seeing is actually a combination of the multipurpose room here. So you see where I said that the stage has been poured already? So that'll be the stage, which will be also used at, you know, during our board meetings. That'll be the, that, that section there in the back. That, that's a combination of classroom and STEM room. But the walls aren't up yet, but that's what that area is back there. Much bigger when you go out and look at it. This is just another view of the stage right there. This is the actual gymnasium. This is, you know, kind of the best shot I can get standing all the way back with my back against the wall. But like I said, we're completely under roof. Even when it rains, it's, it's dry inside there now. Just another, that's another shot of the gym. This here is just a, a view of the, what will be the locker rooms and restrooms looking all the way down to the end where the multipurpose room will be. All the way down there, we see those openings for the windows. That's where the multipurpose room, and I'm standing at the end where the locker rooms and storage will be. And that's just another view of the multipurpose room. And that's another view of the connecting hallway. Exterior, so there, that'll be the main entrance coming in off of the newly installed bus drive once it's, you know, once it starts getting installed around June. But that's the main entrance to the new building. And that's the, that'll be the new courtyard area out there. Looking out from the multipurpose room, you'll be able to look at it, at a new grassed multipurpose area outside, we could call the courtyard. And this is just another view looking down what will be the locker rooms where I was. I was at the, another part of it earlier. That's just another view of the lobby area. And this here, I think this is the final picture, this is where the actual storm trap will go in. There'll be one on the east side. This is right along Vermont Street right here. The other will be along Fisher Street. So they've actually, if you go out and drive past, they're actually, it's actually dug deeper now than what this is right here. So the storm trap will be going in sometime around, it said, it'll be delivered during spring break. So I'm thinking that the second week of April is when they'll actually be installing it. And we'll have pictures of that. And that's it. Any questions?
Can we go back to the gym room itself, if you'd like?
That's one asked her.
Okay. How wide, how long is it?
Well, like I said, the picture doesn't serve it justice. When you get out there, you can actually see how, how, how big it is. This wall right here is actually where the bleachers. You can kind of see the cutout, but the picture doesn't serve it any justice. The bleachers will come all the way out. It's pretty far out here, but you just can't tell from the picture. Maybe one day we'll get a chance to allow it to.
Any question?
Yes.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be as large as a high school gymnasium?
The plane, the court, it will be a, it will be a high school-sized court. It'll be, it'll, it'll measure the same, same measurements.
Right, question. The neighbors, you said you keep the neighbors abreast. Is it on both sides? That's Bishop, what is it?
Laughlin. So we got Laughlin and Bishop. Yeah, so whenever something happens, I let both side, even if it's not gonna affect one side, we still try to let both sides know.
Right. The connection, those cylinder blocks, the walls, will they be painted?
They would definitely be painted. There'll be no unfinished walls in the building. Everything will have some kind of, if it's not paint, it'll be even framed out in drywall.
Okay, great. Will there be shelves in that locker room?
Uh, not in this one.
Great, okay. And then we keep the old side, the Calumet side that we have outside now?
Yes.
So we have that?
We kept all the monuments, all, all those old monuments we have, we're gonna keep those.
Is that being moved, or is that in the same place?
One, uh, is getting relocated, but the others are gonna stay in their original spots.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes.
In terms of the courtyard, will it have like foliage and shrubs and things and benches out there?
Yes.
Will students be able to have access to it?
Absolutely. Once we finalize the plan, we're gonna share that with you all, too, so you can see. We, we actually wanted to make it like an outdoor classroom where students are able to come outside and have class if they want to.
So I have a question. So the front entrance that we see coming in right now, what would be utilized for that area?
Which entrance?
The front.
Right here, that'll still be the main entrance to the school.
Okay.
So that way, when we're having events, that really doesn't have anything to do with the school, they can enter in directly into the gym. If we wanna host a tournament, they can go directly into the gym without having to worry about coming into the school going through.
Just one last question. So with that being said, are we gonna have like an exterior door or glass door for the connection so they won't be able to come to the school? That's locked?
Yes, yes. So we, we'll be able to lock down, pretty much if we want to keep people inside of the gym, we can keep them inside the gym. And that's the way we're configuring all of our key, key card locks and even our cylinder locks to be arranged that way. You got questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cordley. The last update is the, we've started the 2024-25 school year budget planning process. It's in your board package, just a rundown. The administrative team hopes to have a preliminary draft to the board at the April meeting so that we can go over it, take any questions, and then go back and do whatever amendments need to be made. Per the state law, the budget must be placed on display for thirty days. So the goal is to have the completed budget ready to go in May so that it can be approved in June. And then July first, the budget is executed. The reason we want to have a budget executed by July first is because if we don't, then we have to take statutory resolutions so that the district can operate without having an approved budget. That's a huge headache. So it's better for the district to have a budget ready to go on July first so that we're not operating in multiple fiscal years. So please be looking forward to further communication about the budget. I appreciate the hard work already of my team. As we did discuss, this budget is going to look a lot different than it has in recent years just because a lot of the federal funding, well, all of the federal funding that districts have been accustomed to because of COVID is all gone. It's over. So our budgets will look now like pre-2020 budgets, which really requires us to be strategic in how we plan and how we operate. So be on the lookout for that. Any questions? All right, Madam President.
Okay. Considered items, suggested motion, be hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the considered items A, B, C, D, and E as presented. May I have a motion? May I have a motion? May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon, second. Second by Ms. Kimbrough. Question?
Yes. Okay, on the, uh, approval account payable in amount of whatever the amount is I get it. I have a question about the cleaning. I see that we spent sixty-seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars and fifteen cents on cleaning. And then I do see the capital improvement plan of how much we paid on that, which is good. And then I also see that we bought clothes and coats and uniforms and things. Who did we buy those for?
So that's for our students in the McKenna Vento, in our homeless and shared residency program.
Okay, so are these the, that's any child, not just the migrants? Or is it just the migrants?
So it's the students who are enrolled in our homeless program.
Right.
But because we have such an abundance of any kid needs uniforms, we make sure they're taken care of.
Okay. Also... I don't think that's it for that part. Okay, that's it.
Uh, question. C1, the superintendent agreement. I noticed that we did with ISB, who, Dr. Name he came in. We, I thought we approved some superintendent agreements when we met with, we had our retreat. We met with Cory.
So the agreements were approved in the meeting, but it never came back to the board meeting to be approved. Well, it actually did. It was not approved. So that's why it's back on the agenda, so that it can be approved aside.
Roll call, John.
Brown?
I can't vote on the consent. I'd like to say no. I, I, I wasn't at the Board of Education. See, I wasn't. I can't. I never seen that.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent?
I haven't finished with my question before you did that. Because I just have a question. I just seen this. The consolidated issue plan, just could you just give me an update about that?
Sure. So the...
B3. I did not put it, no, I put it out there. I did not ask him in the question when I questioned him in the email. I just asked with just a little bit about the consolidation issue.
All right, so the consolidated issue plan is a document, it's a compliance document that's due every year to ISB prior to us receiving any state or federal grants. It's a, it's really a copy and paste document. It's more of a federal compliance measure to say that the district is going to do right by the grants and all of that. We approve it every year, and that's the initiation of us being able to apply for our federal and state funding for next year.
All right, thank you for that. And I'm asking if we could remove, um, C1's.
Ms. Story, Ms. Story, the motion is on the floor. We've already done the roll call.
But I wasn't finished with my question.
So we've already...
I wasn't finished with my question.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
So for C1, Ms. Story, what is your purpose of wanting to remove it?
Could we just remove it from the consent agenda?
May I have a motion? I would like to.
So it, it sounds like the motion is to approve the consent agenda just A, B, D, and E, correct? So that's the motion. John, you got that?
Yep. So, all right, so...
It was Kimbrough. I mean, I'm sorry.
It was Dixon, and then Kimbrough, and I'll go again with Brown.
Yes.
Brown, okay. Dixon?
Question. Wait. So what do you, this is what I'm trying to find out right now. So we're not gonna do eight, I mean, one, two, maybe we're doing eight, yeah, we're canceling now, see? We're not doing that separate. Okay. Yes.
Okay. Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Item A, B, D, and E carried.
May I have a motion to vote on C1? Motion by Ms. Dixon, second. Who's second?
This Brown.
Okay. Brown?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Let's tie some motion. Item C failed.
Number seven, action items, approval of 2024-2025 school calendar. Suggested motion, be, be hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the public school calendar for 2024-2025 school year as presented. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon, second. Second by Ms. Brown. Roll call, John.
Brown?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
I'm sorry, I'm lost, but...
We're on number seven.
Thank you.
Action items, seven. The school calendar. Oh, oh, the school calendar. Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Approval of adoption of policies, suggested hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the, re-advised to the Board of Education policies that were first read at the board meeting on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as presented. May I have a motion? May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon, second. I didn't hear you. You're not using a mic, ma'am. So did you motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. Second by Ms. Brown. Roll call, John?
Question.
What question?
Yes. So in the policies, um, because you're asking us to do this the second read, right? So it's five policies that showed up as far as we need a board vote. And I have the policies here, and five colon two fifty, leave of absences. That's just for the district. It just says, district need to answer how many employee for that. So the district can, yeah, you have to put that, answer that in before that is sent. So that's one of them, those leave of absences. The next one is six colon two thirty.
Can you give us a second?
Yes. There's five of them.
Well, here's the thing. So just be mindful, we have the board packet way enough ahead of time. And those calls have been made to the superintendent. Now, he has to step away to answer a question that should have been asked at least forty-eight hours or a week before the board meeting. So this puts us on hold. This is not right, and this is not fair, and it's not fair to the, uh, the community.
Madam Chair, I understand, but I've been pushing a policy committee.
But if you understand this, though, this has nothing to do with a policy committee. But thank you. But it has nothing to do with a policy committee. What it has is that you reach out to the superintendent about any questions about the board packet. And you could have asked the superintendent any questions, but he's already left to go get that.
I'm just merely stating, we didn't have enough, we didn't have a chance to, what, what am I calling to?
We're gonna go ahead and vote. You said go ahead and vote.
But Madam President, we can merely just go over this. It's in our packet on the screen. It's five policies.
And again, the superintendent, you have to look at this, Ms. Story. The superintendent and his staff was not prepared for you to ask these detailed questions right now. As you can see, he stepped away from the board table to answer just your question.
It's in the packet.
But he does not have any documents right here. That is the main purpose of...
It's on the list. I'm not going to...
This is the reason why.
Could I just bring up, could I just state for the record, the policies of...
He's already here, so if you want to go over it, if you go over it.
So we can vote as a board. That's it.
We should have been doing that in the first place, but he's already here.
Policy committee meeting. That's why I kept pushing it, so we can, this policy packet was a hundred and one pages.
I'm gonna correct you right there.
Because you said, you said a committee of the whole and didn't ask us, and it was just out there. Everybody have lives. We are not getting paid. We do have an obligation. So I've been pushing a policy committee meeting.
And then you can, and if you can understand, okay. Why don't I help you? Excuse you, Ms. Dixon. But I'mma, I'mma help you. As we discussed as the board, we do have a committee of the whole. Again, you had that right to reach out to the superintendent and ask him. That is what we as a board agreed to. And we did vote for a committee of the whole to vote or to talk about any objects or any items that need to be discussed, whether it's financial, policies, or anything. So you keep talking about a policy committee. And as you were told before from the Illinois Board of Education, that you have a committee, and that the board can talk about policies at that committee. So you're not absolutely not...
Committee of the whole, correct?
Correct, the committee of the whole.
Okay.
Ms. Dixon, go ahead and ask your question.
You pretty much said it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you wanna answer that question, which is wasted?
So there's five policies, as you stated, Ms. Story. Of the five policies, two, five two fifty, leave of absence, that just requires us to state the number. Policy number six two thirty, policy number seven sixty, and policy number seven one ninety. Those are all default to ISB's recommendations. And then policy number seven two seventy required a yes or no, and then answer for the district was no.
Who made that answer? So you said that those was the pop default. It says the board decides. So six two thirty was library media program. It's just a matter of the policy language, but it says board. So, um, the other ones...
So, no, I'm, I'm giving you the recommendation from administration on what the response was of. All, all three of those were, I'm sorry, all five of those were operational policies. So those recommendations come from the administration to the board. So that's what I'm giving you.
So the seven sixty, the residence with, um, what did the administration recommend for employees, for their children to come to school without being charged tuition?
It's the default, what?
What is that?
The default is that ISB does not recommend it, so that's the default that the district goes with.
No, that's just, no. The board, it says in the packet, the board votes, so we get to decide yes or no.
So what I'm saying is, I'm giving the board a recommendation.
Thank you, okay.
That, that's why I said, these are recommendations from administration.
So they said no. So if they have someone to come to the, a district employee wants to let their kid come to school... So they said no, so if they have someone to come to the, uh, a district employee wants to let their kid come to this school, so you all, your recommendation is saying no, they will have to pay tuition.
Correct.
They cannot, so as a board, are we in the presence of that?
So again, we can.
It's the board.
We can vote as a whole with the, with the policies, that's, that's what we're doing right now.
But it's the board vote, that's just a recommendation.
And that's what we're getting ready to do.
We have to vote on the different ones, it's the board vote, not just.
We're not gonna go through teaching every one of the policies. Ms. Dixon, go ahead. Let me ask you, board, do you guys wanna go, how many are there?
Five.
Do you guys wanna vote on each five or each policy?
Last month.
No, after what we voted in closed session, no. We should take care of this now.
Cause you, I don't, I don't even understand why you even bringing this up, Ms. Story, really, really, that's what we're gonna do here. Is it?
One of the board's main obligation is to set and vote on policies.
Ma'am, after you did what you did last week.
It really cared.
I'm speaking.
Jesus Christ.
I'm speaking, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna do this, Ms. Story, you know exactly what I'm speaking of.
What I would like to say is that if we're gonna vote, this is what I don't get. If we're gonna vote on policies and abide by policies after what we done last month to abide by law?
Yes.
Abide by law?
I, I, I'm sorry, you're referring to what we did last month.
Yes, last month on residency.
Yes.
But I think the policy is, once you take a vote, you move on as a board.
But, and, and what my understanding is, is that once we vote on policies, we are a policy-driven district. That's what we're supposed to be.
But I, but I'm just trying to call, recollect that if we make a vote as a board, we move on.
And so therefore, I'm asking.
I'm just trying to, we moved on, you, you.
Roll call, John.
A vote?
Roll call, John.
Brown?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough? Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Public comments. If there, if there is any public comments intended to speak, please completely fill out the questionnaire, comment form, and present to the superintendent's secretary at this time. The board will be prepared to address those comments related to the agenda within a reasonable time. However, the comments may be forwarded to the superintendent for individual response, no other discussions or actions will take place. Please remain seated until you are recognized by the board president. Please, every person intending to speak must come to a podium and state their comments. Please state your name, comments, and we'll be given to the three minutes.
We have two, our first up is Ms. Harrison.
Yeah, I have to excuse my size, it's a little, it's really bad. You know, I spoke with my friend in South Philly and I was telling about this up here in our district. She said that you guys sound like South Philly district. I have been talking about the superintendent, him being the businessman. In South Philly, they have a superintendent who was also the businessman. He stole one hundred thousand dollars from South Philly. He was given eight years in prison. She said, the board was disbanded because you're, you're unstable and you all are portraying the same identical thing. And when you have a bid, she said, the superintendent never bought bids to the board. He made the decision, he gave one of his friends seventy-two thousand dollars without a bid. Same job is just happening here. Go remember, let me tell you something, that boy somehow went to jail. You better open your eyes up and see what's going on out here. Now you can just shut and argue, and his name was Thomas E. Ryan. You can go on Google and you can read it. He did the same identical thing, District one sixty-eight, same identical thing that you all are doing out here, he stole money. And you all need to get it together. You need to vote no when it's no, when you don't know about finances, I was looking at the finances, he didn't even tell me how much money we had. We told him how much he spent. And you don't know how much money we have, you better get on the case because I'm gonna tell you something. I have a reporter who did this. And you all better get on the case because you're gonna read your names in the paper, this is absolute absurd. I've never seen anything like it. If, if what, somebody don't agree, somebody else has something to say. Well, I didn't agree with nothing that went on up here, you can listen to your board president if you want to. Doesn't mean she's right and it doesn't mean you have to go along with it. She is only one vote. And you all better stop, go to, go to Google and read it. Read it for yourself, you are doing the same identical thing and she, and she told me said, that was just like ours. And they end up bankrupt. You better, you better get on the case because as one resident of forty years, you will not get away with this, believe me.
Next up is, uh, Ms. Evans.
Yes. I'm not, I'm gonna be making my latest profile back, good evening, I'm not sure if this is the place or what I'm gonna say. But right now, my granddaughter's, um, report that I get every day, apparently great, some, some like yours. I get a report every day of great work that my granddaughter hasn't turned in. I tried contacting teachers, sending emails, through emails, I forward emails to the principal, I may get one. What does she need? What does she need to do, I need to work, I have no idea what's going on in this school.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, it's on, just, I need to get a little bit closer.
Okay, do I need to start over or do you ever want? I contacted the teacher, I will not know what's going on, I like to know, if something is wrong, send me an email, send me the word, does she have to do it at home? Right now, I have a whole list. All of this, I don't know if you can see from there, here's all the work that the teacher hasn't done. But I don't know what they are, yes, I get what everyone, you're on four oh two, four oh three, this pops in my phone. Sunday, Saturday, and Sunday as well, it comes in, but I have no idea what's going on. And I said, I don't, this is the place for it, but I have tried on my own. Okay, I need better, they have the, um, what, the tutoring program, I thought that was to help them to see what is that you're struggling with, let's work on it. It hasn't happened, so I don't know if she will participate, they did not really that it's happened before. Okay, I need something better for her, I need more, and I need it from you too.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, one of the, uh, which school, all right, Ms. Brown or Principal of County Met will speak with you.
Thank you. New business for you?
Uh, we've had one since, one point since the last board meeting, that's been resolved.
Board report and comments.
So if I may, Madam Chair, uh, I, I am bringing the last of the three, uh, loads of books that I promised that I would bring. And today are here. It's a recent, a little bit of confusion about what this is for, as a reminder. Uh, I was a resident, community resident on a rain ready project and I got a stipend of five hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, with that, I have bought what looks to be a hundred and twenty, I'm trying to get it straight. I bought forty books for Burrak Academy, fifty books for Burrak, and forty-two books for Cali Me- uh, Middle School. The books from Burrak totaled a hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Uh, the books from very, um, from Burrak, two hundred and sixty, and the, and the books for Cali McMiddle School, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, total links, uh, hundred and thirty-two books at, uh, six hundred and seventy dollars and, six oh seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, and again, I am giving these books, um, so that there is no confusion or conflict of interest about participation on the rain ready committee. So I'm gonna give these to the super, uh, the librarian, this is for Cali Mc, uh, Middle School. And, um, I will also be making sure that, uh, per state regulations, that I submit a full report to the district regional office, uh, clearing my, my good name, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion? May I have a motion?
I do have a comment. So first, I just wanted to ask the question, where's the attorney? That was my question to the board. You couldn't make it? I don't know, that was, uh, this question, I just said, where's the attorney? And then next, um, I just wanna speak about the rain project. I did get the email, Madam Chair, about the rain project, I just wanna put it out there once again that with this rain project, the contract, I know you all have to look at, the attorney have to look at it. And I was ready to ask my question to the attorney of what, you know, the questions that he had about the contract. But this is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come to the school. So, uh, my understanding, if we don't vote on it, by the end of this month, we're gonna lose that grant. So I'm just putting it out there for this rain ready project. Um, I do not understand that as a community member, that Ms. Brown is on it, this is money that is coming to the school. Once again, it was four hundred fifty thousand dollars, not sixty thousand that was quoted, but four hundred fifty thousand on space on what they said. So I'm gonna reach out to the attorney as well to see where he is on this contract because this is money that's coming to the school to help out the, uh, playground. Because on Winchester, I believe that they did the whole flooding things and fixed the street. So it'd be the same in Burrak, I believe, uh, that they doing it for the flooding and things so that nature. I know the community, some of your houses may have flooded, but this project, uh, will help, help that out as well. So, did you answer the question, where's the attorney?
Thank you. So duly noted, Ms. Love?
Can I talk about the calendar if you have spoken about in closed session?
No.
You can talk about it now.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. You have two minutes.
Well, speak fast.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a suggestion for the calendar, and I did a poll. I went over to the, uh, picnic, uh, the egg hunt up at the center on Saturday, and I spoke with parents. I spoke with village employees, and I spoke with trustees. And my suggestion for this calendar is that the children go to school Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I mean, off on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for Easter, I mean, not Easter, Thanksgiving, and they work, the teachers work on Monday and Tuesday, and the kids are off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I questioned this and he said, because of, uh, lack of staff coming in on that day, it would be somewhat, you know, problematic. Okay, uh, if staff want to take off on Monday and Tuesday, then they should take two sick days and bring in a doctor's note so that they can get paid for Wednesday and Friday. We've done this in the past, so there's no problem with it. Okay, this, you might lose, say you're losing two days, well, in February, you have, uh, the twelfth, the twelfth and, which is President's Day, I mean, now it's, it's, uh, Lincoln's birthday. But then you can take off the seventeenth, which is President's Day, which everybody in the state and the country takes off on the seventeenth, so we should do the twelfth and the seventeenth. But if you don't wanna take twelfth off in the middle of the week on Wednesday, then go to March and take March third off, which is, uh, Casby Pulaski Day. And so you have a date in March and one in February. And then at the end of the school year, which ends on the twenty-seventh, a day after Memorial Day, which doesn't make any sense to me, you can end your school year on, we can end our school year on May twenty-third and don't come back. And so thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Love.
You know.
I, I do.
So, Ms. Love, as I shared with you, uh, when we talked on the phone, as well as I shared with the board via email, uh, the school calendar is written by three main things, one, the state law, which we have to follow. Two, the collective bargaining agreement, which is the union, and then three, based on district practice. So the things that you outlined, those are things that we really don't have control over because we have to buy, buy the concepts of our union contract.
You are not, wow, you are not, okay.
So our union contract clearly outlines when you can take, when we start school. It outlines the holidays that you take, and even our union contract is actually outdated because there's certain laws at the state level now that requires that we do things different. You spoke about February. Um, the state gives you an option, you either take Lincoln, which is a state holiday, or you take President's Day, which is the federal, your district makes that determination. District one thirty-two is always taking Lincoln Day. So our calendar, there's nothing new about the calendar, it's the exact same calendar we have right now. So again, we were coming back, and, and I must say this as well, since I've been here, that's the first time this district has gotten out in May. Historically, they get out in June. So we've been able to work the calendar to get the teachers out of school earlier. Unfortunately, because of the state law that we have to be closed on federal election day, which is gonna impact the schools every even year. So we're always gonna go to school one day extra, so to speak, on years that fall in the infant. So in twenty twenty-five, we won't have this issue, you'll get off the Friday before Labor Day. But in twenty twenty-six, you'll have the same issue again, you'll get off the day after. It's just how the, the days fall with the calendar. So again, our calendar is the exact same for next year as it is for this year, as it has been in the past. The only difference is the weeks in November, and you're correct. It is very difficult to supervise students when you have a lot of teachers and staff.
Say that, you said that.
No, you, you brought up November, and I'm saying, yes, it is administrative opinion and the research across Cook County will show you will have three hundred kids sitting in the gym room watching a movie with two adults. And one of them, or comes and shaking her head because we've seen it, so that, so giving the, the.
When did you see it? Because you've already had, you always had that whole week off.
We had, we, prior to becoming here, the, the calendar was written. So the calendar was written for this current, no, I'm sorry, last year, prior to becoming, and last year was when it was implemented. So I didn't write the last year's calendar, that was under previous administration, we continued the calendar always. So that's what I'm saying, this year's calendar is no different than it has been for the past two years.
So when did you see all the students in the, whatever, without teachers, when you weren't here?
So what I'm saying is, it, it doesn't just happen in District one thirty-two. There, most districts in Cook County do that, now they're moving to the full week off because it's difficult when you give teachers Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday already. A lot of them will take Monday and Tuesday off as well to travel, to do whatever. So the students that do come to school, you have to supervise them. So usually you don't have enough adults, so you put the kids in one room, show a video or do something just to keep them contained. So rather than having to do that, we give the entire week as a break, so those two days, Monday and Tuesday, and then we make up those days on the back end.
But what sense does it make for the students to come to school on, uh, May twenty-seventh after Memorial Day? When they can finish up on the twenty-third?
So again, Ms. Love, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, there's no way possible for us to finish on the twenty-third unless we cancel other days which are statutory.
It is a way because I've already told you what.
So Ms. Love, so can you discuss that with Dr. Alexander?
I did discuss it, that's why I brought it here.
So now.
He gave me the same excuse that I had.
But thank you so much, thank you so much.
You know what, I'm about to.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
I'm still talking.
Thank you. Your two minutes, your two minutes is up.
That was past the two minutes.
Why is it you have to be so difficult?
You know what, you need to stop talking to me.
Uh, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Dixon?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, Ms. Love, please.
No, she don't talk to me whenever she gets ready to.
Say whatever comes to you.
That's the problem. Dictatorship on this board.
Ms. Dixon.
Dictatorship.
Uh, we did like the same email that you just explained to Ms. Love. I don't know where she was at, but we got the same email. Again, uh, I didn't talk while you was talking to Ms. Harris, uh, please, may I have the same respect? Not if you can get up and walk out. Ms. Dixon. No, I mean, I didn't talk while she was talking. Same respect. Here's the problem. You all, we were all in the meeting. We all sat in this meeting, we agreed, we are not gonna get on the dance floor.